Okay. Alrighty, it's five o'clock PM. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a quick roll call. Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Fresh Air?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Dr. Manning?
Here.
Everybody's here. Everybody will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Alrighty, at this time, we'll move into delegations. We do have one delegation this evening. Ms. Kim Stumpf. Just a reminder that you have three minutes under the delegation policy. I'll have the timer up here. And of course, all delegations are to remain civil. Mrs. Stumpf brought this letter that I'm going to distribute here to the board members. As soon as I get it distributed, I'll start your time. Just a second. You go ahead.
I don't really have much to say. But my letter, mine, says most of everything. My kid's not in jeopardy anymore because I withdrawed her. But there's tons of parents that came to me on Facebook and in public today that are afraid to come here because their kids tell them that it doesn't matter. So I decided to speak because that's what I should do for them. But I know JT's here, and I know that he has been a good principal, and I have always respected him. And I know that he has handled some things that other people could not handle for me. But my point is, these, there's like five kids that are causing the problems, and 20 kids that are being bullied around. Why not punish the five kids? It doesn't matter who their parents are. I mean, yeah, when I went to school here, the name gang was a thing. It always has been in this county. But it shouldn't be like that. So I just, I really hope that you guys take into consideration everything and do your part as board members to make a difference for our kids in this county. Then that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Stumpf.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alrighty, that will take us out of delegations. And we'll move into the expulsion hearing. At this time, the parent has the option of a closed hearing or an open hearing. Okay, so at this time, can I have a motion to go into executive session to do an expulsion hearing of a student? I can't talk today.
Sir, ma'am.
There's somebody here, sir. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to go into executive session to do a student expulsion hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Any member of the public will need decks at the room until we are finished with expulsion hearing. Thank you.
All right, that'll bring us now to reports and we'll start with the Calhoun-Gilmer Career Center Administrative Council. Mr. Bark?
Hello, there, everybody. The, as of, as of today, the Career Center now has all certified teachers back on, on staff. Had a vacancy, it is, it has been filled. They are supposed to meet, we're going to meet tomorrow, regular meeting, and going to discuss some of the things that deal with the $2 million SBA grant for the Foods Lab, which won't be, won't start on that till school's out. And hopefully they can get it done relatively quick, but the, next year, the Food Lab probably will be in the old Lions Club hot dog stand that we're presently using.
You can't have it back!
But, and my email said that they, we have the, she has the results of the test back, but they're still embargoed, not able to give them out. So as soon as I have that information, I'll present it as to where they, where they scored, but things are looking up, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bark. What test was that for?
Which now?
The, 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 yeah, the test.
The, oh, where they take like, in, each, each program, they test and, and have to do that to show where, where they stand with that part.
Kind of an industry readiness.
Right.
Okay. Work for, workforce readiness.
Nice.
It's called not, some people call it not the...
Noxy.
Uh, I remember.
That's, yeah, I couldn't think of the word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that'll move us into the consent agenda and we'll start with the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8th, 2025. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, on to approval of the minutes of the special meeting of September 15th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 15th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 15th, 2025. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, that'll move us into bills for payment. Ginger, you had the floor.
Okay, um, I just want to pay your attention to a couple things. I did give you one last bill there, and that's simply because it came in just minutes after we finalized everything, and it's a local vendor, so I wanted to make sure we got them paid, they helped us out in a hurry, so. And then we also sent you free bill list that we completed because we asked you to mention at the last meeting to do some things that had come in that we knew were coming in. One of those was local utilities, so as most of you know, they went through months without going, well, we just got those minimums, so it took a while to get that reconciled and actually took some trips home to the Maricots to some locations to make sure the readings were right. They worked the laser on their end to make sure they were right, and so we were just a few extra days getting that put together, but that is, that catches us up now, so we'll just be seeing monthly bills from now on.
I'm like, oh, go ahead, fine.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Um, and then the, let's see, we also did a batch for the faculty senate funds to send those out to the schools based on who they have in their faculty senates, and so that process was completed, that money sent out. And then we did one extra list that has just a few things, again, another local vendor that helped us out in the pitch, we wanted to get paid as quickly as we could, and some insurance, and then just a little bit of supplies, so that's what we did in the interim.
Make a motion to approve the bills for payment.
Second. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the bills for payment as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, Ginger, we now have the August cash report.
Okay, it is just the normal cash report, and then the sequence of events is we'll prep the, present the entire financial at the next meeting on 29th. Then once I close September, I can present September's tax report, and along with that, we're going to present that longer treasures report that we talked about coming quarterly. There, and I discussed it, I was trying to get us on an actual quarterly schedule as opposed to like, you know, do it in March, and then three months later, I wanted to get us on a schedule, so most of it's not, so we would, you know, be more like we'd have a monthly, you know, things tied together to be quarterly, so that's how it'll work for the next couple of months.
Any questions on the cash report from board members?
Nope.
Okay, we're good to go there. All righty, that'll move us into new business, and we'll start with the revocation of open enrollment status for student E001, 2025-2026, Dr. Manning.
Um, aft, after, let's look here, okay, well, I just want to read a couple policies here. The West Virginia Department of Education Policy 7212 states that the policy may allow for circumstances under which an out-of-county placement may be revoked due to chronic absenteeism, tardiness, or behavioral infractions categorized as Level 3 and 4, defined in West Virginia Policy 4373, expected behavior in safe support of schools, or failure to comply with agreed-upon conditions of the transfer as established between the parents and guardians and the county school district. Gilmer County Schools Policy 51, 1, 5113 also states that the Gilmer County Board of Education may revoke student open enrollment status due to chronic absenteeism, tardiness, or behavioral infractions categorized as Level 3 and 4 offenses. Student E002, or excuse me, E001 was found at the last Board of Education meeting to have violated those, both of those policies, and was recommended, recommended for expulsion. So it's up to the County Board of Education now to make the determination if those students' open enrollment, if that student's open enrollment status shall be revoked. And at that expulsion meeting, we decided to put together a, a committee to review that and make recommendations, and the committee did meet, and the committee is recommending that the Board of Education make a motion to revoke the student E001, 2025-26, open enrollment status in Gilmer County schools in accordance with the Gilmer County Schools Policy 5113 and West Virginia Department of Education Policy 7212.
We make a motion pursuant to 6-9-43 of the West Virginia Code that the Board go into executive session to decide upon disciplining, suspension, or expulsion of any student in any public school or public college or university unless the student requests an opening meeting.
Second.
There, a second, okay. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries.
Make a motion to arise from executive session.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to arise from executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. We're now back in open session. Dr. Manning, what's the recommendation?
Make, same as earlier, make the recommendation to revoke student E001, 2025-26, open enrollment status in Gilmer County Schools in accordance with the Gilmer County Schools Policy 5113 and West Virginia Department of Education Policy 7212.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the superintendent's recommendation for the revocation of open enrollment status for student E001 to 2025-2026. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right. Dr. Manning, on to the next revocation of open enrollment status for student E002, 2025-2026.
Make a recommendation to make a motion to revoke the student E002, 2025-2026, open enrollment status in Gilmer County Schools in accordance with Gilmer County Schools Policy FIT 5113 and West Virginia Department of Education Policy 7212.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to follow the superintendent's recommendation on revocation of open enrollment status for student E002, 2025-2026. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right. Dr. Manning, we're to Titan Legacy Discussion, Possible Action.
So the Titan Legacy Achievement Award is created to recognize Gilmer County Schools employees who have longstanding dedication to athletics and academics. And those folks that have left a lasting mark on generations of students. This prestigious honor are those who served in Gilmer County Schools faithfully. They coached selflessly and led with heart, building the Titan tradition of excellence. And you have the proposal document there for the Titan Legacy, but I'll go down through a little bit of the criteria. These would be, this would be a chance for us to recognize publicly some of our most decorated service personnel, our teachers, our staff, our coaches, anybody that was associated within our school and with athletics and academics. So the coach would have to have coached for 10 or more years in Gilmer County. They would have to be employed and working as a Gilmer County professional or service employee for 10 years. They must be a part of a team that had won a state championship game or participated in three or more regional championships, or had three or more individual state champions. This is also recommended for somebody that demonstrated exceptional influence on student growth and development in both academic and athletics. This type of fellowship honor, the goal was to be able to hopefully find one or two people from the past every year and highlight that person. That person would receive a lifetime athletic pass to Gilmer County events. We would want those people coming back and, and being able to share their time and their experience with our, with our students. We would have a public recognition ceremony, and a plaque made to permanently display and enshrine their name on a, on the wall at Gilmer County High School. They would also be featured on our district website and in our school publications and our local media, and highlighted at our local events of homecoming. When we first started talking about this, we said, what is homecoming? It's when people come back and celebrate the times of the past. Who were those coaches, the teachers that, that they could celebrate? And so we started thinking about all those people, and so on and so forth, and we thought, we need a way that we can celebrate these people over time. And they can, they can, they can be a part of this fellowship and, and receive recognition throughout our sporting events and our athletic events and our academic events because they were there and, and participated for a long tenure, and so on and so forth. So we, we have developed a process where there's a selection committee, and there would be a high school principal, an athletic director, a classroom teacher, a service personnel representative, and a Board of Education member. And every year, these folks would meet in June, and they would review. Maybe some years we don't get anybody, maybe some years we have one or two. But then they would be inducted at the beginning before the fall season starts, and during that year, they'd be celebrated at some of our sporting events, our football events, our basketball events, and so on and so forth. There's a criteria, like I said, they have to serve faithfully for 10 years as a coach and 10 years as a employee. They have to have some sports accolades, some academic accolades, and it has to be described in the nomination form. And then based off of that, there is a scoring matrix where one or two people, the top two candidates for that year, have the availability to receive this honor. And it's just a way that we can celebrate some of the people of our past. We're really trying to bring back some of the traditions. Mr. Fox and I have looked at multiple traditions over, from the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and 2000s, and we've went back to, you know, formulating traditions, and this is one trying to build a new tradition, but we've looked at some of the old traditions like the G-Club, and some of the, the Sadie Hawkins dances, and some of the activities that we can do with our kids that our past folks have participated in, which will build school culture around things that have been prominent there in the past. We're bringing back the old bonfire for homecoming that we used to have there every year, where we did the tug of wars, and the kids had the baby bottles and all the different things, and then, you know, the congregate dances, and we're taking a look at all of these type of historical things. But these are folks that will be separated from that. They are people that participated in those events in the past, made an impact on student lives, and we'd like for them to keep coming and making impacts on student lives. So that's what the Athletic Legacy Fellowship is. It's a teacher, it's a service person, it's a coach, it's a, it's an athletic trainer. It's, it's all of these people that made an impact on our students over time in Gilmer County, and it's a way to recognize their leadership and their dedication. It takes a lot of hours and a lot of hard work to be someplace for 10 years, and a lot of practices and after-school, and we just want to recognize those people of the past while we have a chance to do it.
Sure. So the only thing that I, two cents I would like to throw in is that I would like to see a Titan legacy not only for sports, but I would like to see a Titan legacy for academics as well, because there's a lot of teachers, like, that I had when I was at, you know, Gilmer County High School.
That one is coming, too. We've talked about that, we want to do an academic piece as well.
That were purely academic, that I think.
Need to be recognized.
Should be honored, and, and would, you know, if you can convince them, would, you know, have good input for our school system as well.
Be a way to bring them back in the fold.
We, we plan to do a Legacy Fellowship for academics as well. This one's both academics and athletics, but we would put similar criteria with.
Yeah, well, this one says, you have to be a coach, right?
They have to be a coach, yeah, they have to have coached, or not just a coach, but they had to be associated with, there's athletic directors, trainers, coaches, multiple.
Yeah, I'd like to see just an academic.
Yeah. And we've had that discussion, having with Mr. Fox, doing a straight academic one as well.
So will there be like a committee put together to like vote on the people, or how will that?
Yes, there's, there's going to be, the committee consists of a principal, the principal athletic director. The committee's organized by the superintendent, but it's going to have the principal athletic director, a classroom teacher appointed by the superintendent, a service personnel representative appointed by the superintendent, and one Gilmer County Board of Education member. So they will, we're going to send out nomination forms, and then those nomination forms will be reviewed every year and looked at. Say we get five, that committee will score those forms and the top two, up to the top two. We may only choose, depends on how many we get, if we only get two forms back, but there could be one or two people every year. Hopefully, unless we run out of years and we, over the next three or four years, we identify these people, but this, you know, that's, it would be the committee selection that we would recognize, and of course, those people could be renominated the next year, and hopefully we get to recognize several of these over time.
The only thing I might say, like on number three, we're dealing with state championships and things. There's a group of, of older coaches that were out there that would have been 60s, 70s, and 80s that were junior high coaches here when we had all the junior highs. They would be excluded from this because they would not have a regional championship. You might add something there.
We could put a slash conference championship if you think that would.
Well, yeah, it would have been, the county's what it would have been because it wasn't.
We could put a slash conference championship.
I like conference championship because L K C, that's pretty.
That's a hard thing to do. It's hard, if you participate in three conference championships, you've done, you've been an active part.
It's something that's kind of always steady, opposed to your sections and your regions getting switched in.